Called this meeting, I agree to receive counsel to order here at Stafford County Annex, July 7th, 2020. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Ten-minute regular session to discuss possible applications.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? Can I get a motion, please?
Summon second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have any citizens comments this evening? Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, June 16th, 2020. Can I get a motion?
Summon second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appropriation order seven dash seven, 2020, in the amount of ninety-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents, and petty cash in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Can I get a motion?
Summon second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads. Electrical department, Jeff.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay. Water department, Jason.
Well, the only thing is a sewer and J C I had brought an emergency pump out just in case we have problems due to they haven't been here yet. So they're just trying to, you know, keep good faith with us and so it's free of charge as long as it takes for them to get here. So I thought that was a pretty good deal.
Any word on when?
Well, they said three weeks, but.
They said first of May, too, you know.
Yeah, they said first of May or fifteenth of May, too, but they, he was shooting at the concrete cutter that's gonna be there in three weeks. They start cutting that hole.
So when he told me two weeks, that wasn't correct?
Well, I thought he said three.
I think, yeah, I think he, I think he said three weeks.
On the phone when I called him, he said.
Pretty good, I guess, keep on top of, I guess.
I mean, the two guys that were out said they thought it was about three weeks. First August, around there.
Yeah, during August, yeah.
Anything else?
No, no sewer, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, moving on to street park department. What do we got to report?
Well, I was just wanting to tell you, I'm saying, waiting on, waiting on fill for the, the oil and the pricing of the ceiling. And I'm working on, we had found out, or I found out that last year we had put a chat of a limestone down, it's not holding up very good. So I got talking to some guys back there where I used to work and they were putting, he was putting down order in Grant. A three-eighths number two, so I got some pricing on that coming. And it holds up a lot better than limestone, of course, so that's what we're gonna try to shoot for and make this, make these roads a little better here. Instead of breaking down. And other than that, what I'd like to do, my plan was, was starting on, we had started patching and then we had milled some today. Tore some out on nutting, so that way we can start, my plan is, is hopefully we can have the money to start all of nutting. Go back over to grade, do all of grade, all the way down fifth, and maybe out on number one, our first street here, maybe we can have enough money to get all those done. Just to help hold those together until we can keep milling. And as we're filling pod holes, two other guys said that they would help me and then they can start on West Street. And then other, other thing, is met with Chris and he gave me a bid of eighty-five hundred dollars to do West Street that comes from the concrete to the asphalt, right there at Bob's place. And he said that eighty-five hundred to do thirty-something feet there, and I told him we'd mill it down, because we wanted the millings. And then, but he had, he had a stipulation in there, or whatever, not stipulation, but he said, there's a, there is a pot, or forming a hole underneath the curb, like a sinkhole, and he says that's, he doesn't know what's causing it until they get into it, so he can't push that one on the price. Which is understandable, you know, so that's what he has to that, if you guys wanted to think about having him replace that whole section. He's gonna take off a section of his, we're gonna go back and do a sec, four sections of curb on each side. And redo that up to the chunk on the, on this side of that one, too, and do all that curving, and make that all concrete there. Because he wants to take it off, because the other one's ramped up, so he wants to sit there and take ours down, make it straight instead of. So that's what he's trying to do, so.
Where's this at, Jason?
Right at the end of, right at Bob's time.
West Street, Bob's time, it's.
Where transitions into that concrete.
He had a name for it, it's what everybody calls it, Rutherford Polley or something like that, I can't remember what he calls it, Hill Street.
When, when John did that, they, they just kind of shot in the dark deal to make it match, and it's always had a hump in it. Right there, you know, and it's, we should've, we should've done it years ago, and we never did. Everybody put it off, but.
Yeah, there's two storm drains right there, too, and he's, there's a chunk missing out of that one, and he wants to redo all those doors that are coming up nice, and make a nicer, or transition through there, I guess you could say. So, that was the other thing.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns in regards? Jason, just keep us informed, let us know what's going on, anything you find out immediately, make sure that Jamie knows, so she can let us know right away. All right, thank you. Okay, grant administrator, have you heard anything from Lisa? Nothing. Knock it up. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns to convey to Lisa? Okay, moving on. Police chief, Chief Adams.
Uh, his name's one, they got Dustin be leaving on the 27th for the academy, so that's still on and going well. We've got three dog deployments since the last council meeting, two of them successful, one is over in Stafford, we did get a distribution case over there. And we had one, we have had two here with one successful in town here. And then in your packets, I know we've talked about it a little bit, and I've talked with you guys, and so we need to look at getting a new vehicle for the K-9, that Dodge pickup just will not cool the back. I can't get it below eighty-four degrees on most days to get to the back on the dog, still good for patrol. Right now, they have a vehicle sitting in Wichita, it's a 2020 Dodge Durango police package. They want thirty-one for it, trade-in, they're gonna give us six thousand for the Charger. So total cost will be twenty-five, seven, twenty. With all the equipment, total cost and everything will be thirty-two, four oh five for the K-9 cage and all the equipment and labor putting it in. The equipment fund, we have forty-one thousand, eight twenty-five in it. After we take out for the new car, we'll still have almost ninety-five hundred. We figure on six years, by the end of six years for the vehicles, that puts in fifteen thousand dollars a year. Just by the end of 2021, we'll have thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred. The end of 2026, we'll have a hundred and fourteen thousand in there. Right now, the Charger needs new tires, the front end needs to be replaced, we do have deck screws holding the, the wood, or the paneling on the inside of the car together, because it's, it's folded over in the heat and everything else. And it was that way when I took it over. So we've kind of tried to get it to come down, so you can't see it as bad, and had to use deck screws to get it down. It's just ready to go. So as far as putting any money, I hate putting any money, I don't even like putting gas in it, but we've gotta do that. But six thousand dollars is a pretty good offer for that Charger, I think before, anybody is only offering four for it, so. Just asking the council, we can get the equipment, they have the cars, so we could actually go get it this week. And I talked to them today, they will allow us to keep the Charger, to pull the equipment out and start putting it in the new car. They said that's not a problem, they do it all the time, so. It does have, the nice thing about the Dodge Durango is, it does have the rear, the rear A/C in it, so that will keep the dog cooler. And that's the one thing we're missing. As I talked to Marshall, I learned that the A/C for the back of the truck has, it all runs through the tunnel. And it's all blocked by the center console and everything that's in the, in the patrol vehicles, so. Any questions on any of that? We're still looking at the way we can rotate them, just to take care of the cars, I think are gonna last, I mean, these cars have lasted quite a while, and they weren't taken care of, so I'm, I'm pretty positive that we're gonna be able to keep our cars a whole lot longer, just because we take care of them a whole lot better than what they were, so.
What, what are you looking at? Next, next time, get different vehicle, Alan? Twenty, twenty-four, five?
I would say the Dodge, it has ninety-seven thousand miles on it, it's still a good truck. I don't know why they were trying to get rid of it, it's a good truck. And it's got at least a good two gears left in it. I mean, the thing runs just fine, the only thing I think we're gonna, the only thing I would need to buy for that truck is I wanna buy a, if we can, we'll put that one back out on patrol, is to buy the same center cage that we have for Tori's vehicle, just so we have a prisoner of transport back there. For safety, the officers buy that, those are seven hundred dollars, and then it'll probably need new tires next year, but that's, that's gonna be it. We did spend eight hundred dollars to try and get the A/C fixed and blowing better, it's not, but with a hot dog, one, we don't wanna bake a dog in there, and two, if it's hot all day long, you, you know, when you do pull your dog out, when you can't cool that dog off, he's not gonna work as well anyways, so, whether you're doing tracking or you're doing narcotics work. But, so I would say on your question, I, probably two years or so, and we'll have enough money in there to get that one fixed. Because now we're in the rotation where our equipment inside, most of it will fit over into the new vehicle. So we won't have to buy an outfit, all brand-new vehicle, a lot of it we can carry over.
Hey, council, what do you think?
It is more than we've ever been offered for the Charger.
I would say repair-wise, if we keep the Charger, right now, it's probably not safe for anybody to drive to a call at a, at a higher speed. Three thousand dollars is probably what it's gonna cost us to redo the front end, and that'll be the third time the front end's been redone. The A/C's going in and out on it, so sometimes it's working, sometimes it's not, I know we've had it over to Marshall's shop, we've been out to Napa with it, so. It's going, but we're gonna have to start putting money in it if we don't do this. Thing about the Dodge Durangos is, they're not gonna make them, but they're a good package. We don't want a Ford Explorer for the dog. Dodge is not going to be making them again for quite a while, so this is gonna be the last order that car dealers are gonna be able to get in, and I called a place down in Oklahoma, they put an order in, said they might get some in November, but they're not even counting on Dodge fulfilling that order for them, and Wichita's getting some next month, but they got one in, so that's why they called me back and said, hey, we have one in right now that's a white one, just what you're looking for, so. It's probably, and it's a pretty good deal, twenty-five thousand dollars for new one. I'll tell you that Stafford bought a, two used Ford Explorers from the Highway Patrol, they got a minimum of fifty thousand miles on them, and they paid twenty-five nine for those, and this is brand-new for twenty-five, seven, after our trade-ins, so.
Hey, council, what do you think? A or n?
I don't have a problem with it. It's like the money's there, it's like it's planned out, but question is, I guess, trade and charger in there?
Do you think, Alan, like, how many years do you think for your, for your, like, Tori's and this vehicle, I mean, how, how long are you thinking you'd like to keep them?
Oh, I, I think there's a minimum, a very minimum of six years, just because we're, you know, we're, we're still taking care of the vehicles. As long as we get the oil changed, and we take care of them, and we keep them clean, and they're not just trashed, we're gonna keep them a lot longer. I mean, it's, you know, for one, the pickups, we're getting them with the, the six-cylinder in them, so that's, that's a lot better. Thing about the Dodge Charger right now, too, is we're getting about ten miles to the gallon in fuel on it, so. But a minimum of six years, you know, if they're, if they're getting taken care of. That's one reason even trying to keep the miles off the Tori, if I can get things swapped out pretty quick, because we're gonna have to take the Charger down, which means everybody's gonna have to drive Tori's truck. So I wanna try and hurry up and get the thing swapped out, so that we're back to having another patrol vehicle, and and part-timers and Dustin don't have to drive hers, and we're putting all those miles on hers, that's one thing I'm trying to keep from happening, so.
Can you, any more discussion?
Does the pickup in pretty good condition?
Yeah, it really is. That's, that's why it's amazing, I don't know why they were trying to blow it up.
That's the only thing scares me, I guess, Alan, is, you know, keeping that thing around when they're trying to, you know, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I've driven that thing, I had a call, I was in order doing a special assignment, and I had to come back here to run the dog on Tori's car stop. That thing's as solid as can be. Why they were wanting to get rid of it, I don't know. I, I don't wanna get rid of it, I like being in it with the dog, but the problem is, it just doesn't cool the back for the dog. We've tinted the windows, we've done everything we can do to try and keep it cooler in there, and it's just not, it's not blowing the air back to there and cooling back there enough for him, so. But yeah, that truck will last another two years.
I think buying two vehicles in seven months is a push, I'll just say it.
Yeah, that's what I told Alan, is I hate, I hate buying vehicles.
I mean, it's not even close to.
One year after another, I mean, that's not even been here, like you said, but.
Well, and I had no desire, I had no plan on doing this, other than the fact that now it's, we're not able to cool the dog. Otherwise, I had no, because I don't have a problem with the Dodge, I like the car. Yeah, we need to get rid of the Charger, but that's why I was going to give a patrol vehicle to the other guys and let them do it. But the problem is, is we have the nine thousand dollar K-9 that I just, you know, is getting hot, and that's why I never thought about it. I had no plans on it, but now things have changed, we're just kind of looking. That's why I looked in the future of rolling over our money, and by 2026, which would be six years from now, that's how much money we'll have rolling back over.
Yeah, but that's not, we're gonna, you said you wanna get the Dodge gone in two years, so that's gonna come out of there.
Right, we're gonna take, we're gonna take.
That one fourteen's not right.
Thirty grand out of that by the time if, when we get rid of that Dodge pickup. But we'll have trade-in on that Dodge pickup, too, and the equipment, we won't have to buy every bit of equipment, the radios, the light bar, all of that will transfer over onto the new vehicle.
I mean, the hundred and fourteen by 2026, we'll be getting rid of Tori's pickup as well as the Dodge by 2026. Because you say six years, Tori's pickup will be six years by 2026, we'll have two more vehicles by then, right? I mean, a hundred and fourteen.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, the thing is, is mine.
I mean, it's not gonna get, it's not, we're not gonna make that one fourteen, right? I mean, that's not really ever gonna.
No, no, I'm just saying that that's what we will have then, after we trade off the Dodge Charger, that's what we would have then come time to, minus getting rid of the Dodge pickup, which will be under, you know, we bought Tori's brand-new truck and had to buy everything for it. We had nothing other than a light bar, we had to buy a radar unit, we had to buy everything for that truck, radios and all. And it, and it was still under, it was under thirty-four, or right at thirty-four thousand dollars for everything, for a brand-new truck and all the equipment. Our radios, both radios, those are gonna, those will be able to transfer over, the siren box will be able to transfer over, all that stuff will, will go over. So we won't have to buy all new like we did for hers. Because the only thing that we didn't have to buy, which was about two grand, is a light bar, but everything else for Tori's truck, we had to buy brand-new. And that's like even for this Dodge Charger, cutting down some price, that back light bar that's in that, the Charger, that back light bar will work to be installed in that Durango. The radios, the, the radar unit, the, the dash cam, all of that equipment, the only thing we're really gonna have to end up getting is going to be the center console, the K-9 cage, and a new siren box, and the front lights, that's, that's pretty much it.
Does that truck use oil?
The Dodge?
What other vehicles do they buy, I mean, something else, which I'm a Dodge guy, but the Charger's at peace, the pickup air conditioner doesn't blow cold, but then we're gonna buy another Dodge. I mean, is there any other options that are decent out there, or that is, I mean, the Ford Explorers are junk, or why, or what's the reasoning for that?
Ford Explorers are junk because they, the new ones that they have come out with for the last two years, there is something that is wrong with the electrical wiring in them, so when you hook up all the, the equipment inside of them, the engineers haven't been able to figure it out and piece it together, they changed the whole wiring harness and everything in those Explorers. Even, uh, Trooper, not the one here in town, the one that's always in town, Paul, they've been fighting his vehicle, trying to get everything fixed on his, because they're just, they're having electrical issues, that's what the big problem with those Fords are. And once you get that grimmly going, it's just tough. But for some reason, Ford changed all their wiring harnesses in the car, instead of just leaving them the way they were. Because they used to be great, but that's why the Highway Patrol's all going to Dodge Durangos, they're trying to buy up as many as they can get now, and putting them in those. But economy-wise, fuel-wise, everything like that, it's, it's gonna get, it'll get good fuel mileage, and we'll be, we'll be in a lot better shape.
This is, this, is, where is this from again?
Davis Moore is where the, what do you mean, where's what, the car, yeah, it's at Davis Moore.
Did they have the statement, did you?
Yes, yeah, that's why the price is so cheap.
So I mean, pretty much pricing around, they're pretty well got the price.
Yeah, it's just gonna be, it's gonna give you what for the trade-in. So, you know, and we're having the guys, the guys that are driving the Charger are filling it up, too, maybe even three times a day. I mean, I had four hundred and some dollars in receipts for fuel in like a month and a half. You know, I watch my fuel receipts, I watch how much fuel's going in, and who's getting how much fuel and stuff, and there's, there's times where I'll see two to three receipts in one day from the Charger, and they're just out of trouble. It's not like it's leaving the city, so, and that's burning a lot more fuel than what that Dodge pickup and Tori's is. And we both patrol, you know, all the time, too, so.
Is there any more discussion? Is that anything about?
So two years for sure without another one?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, that Dodge is a solid truck, and it blows, when you're sitting in the front seat as the driver and the passenger, it's, it's good on A/C, I mean, you, you get the A/C, it's just not pushing it to the back. But as far as the electrical, we've got that fixed, so the headlights going out and all of that, I mean, I haven't had an issue with it once. You know, other than when I first started it, I, we had to change a wiring in the, in the headlight, but other than that, we haven't had a problem, one, with the Dodge. It started every time, it's, you know, it runs solid and runs good.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to, if we could get on a different rotation where we're going every two years or something like that, or three. I mean, having them bunched up like that, but I also.
I mean, I would like to, like the county does, but the county also has a whole lot more money in their vehicle fund than what I have. You know, they roll up, the sheriff's department's rolling over seventy thousand dollars a year into their funds and stuff like that, and I don't have that, and that's, you know, so it's not a big deal for them, but then when we start throwing good money at, at a bad, a bad deal, and that's what I just don't wanna get in with that Charger. And I think, you know, it's a smart thing to say that was the one to go, because that Dodge pickup is still really good, I mean, it's a good truck. It's a, you know, the four-wheel drive works, I mean, everything's good on it, I like the Dodge truck, but it's just not cooling for the dog. You know, one thing we can recoup on money is, is we can, we can recoup on money on that cage, we can put the cage online. You know, for somebody else who has a Dodge truck that's just wanting it, you know, that's one thing we can get rid of. We're not out anything, because the cage was donated to us, so we didn't pay anything for the cage. The heat alarm system that's in it, that'll transfer over to the new vehicle, so that's, that's another eight hundred dollars that we don't have to spend. It'll go right into the new vehicle and plug in.
Anything else, Chief?
Ah, that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Attorney, council?
I guess I'd move to approve 2020 Dodge Durango. With trade-in. Equipment, K-9 cage, labor, total cost of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and five dollars, sixteen cents, second.
Okay, have a motion in a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 All in. Nay? Motion carries. Okay, Chief. Okay, moving on. Fire chief, Chief Sanders. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Chief Sanders? All right, city administrator, Jamie.
Um, Ryan had contacted me and wanted to look at changing Saturday's date. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to move it before Saturday, we can't really move it after Saturday. If that's something you guys are willing to do. Graduation, I think, is gonna get the best of his day. Thursday will work for you guys, or if you wanted to proceed without him, or how you guys wanted it, so I just told him we could talk about it tonight.
I'll just be available on Saturday, basically, so I don't know how long it'll take, but, you know, would've been nice to know before this, I probably should've brought it up, but I don't know what else worked for you guys, if it's possible.
I can make whatever work. I probably.
I think Thursday's fine, probably. I'll be five thirty or six, I think, so we're not there super late.
Yeah.
What about, would that work for you, Russ, or not?
I, I doubt it. I, I'll try, I guess I better, I can answer that, but I'll try.
Saturday would work better. Not really.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the best I can.
I don't want to lose.
Thursday would prob, I'll try to make it, I'll try to make it.
I think it'd be important to have a full council, I mean, that's why, so it can work for everybody the best we can. We can't do it Sunday, I hate to do it Sunday, but. What, what you said, it has to be before Saturday, but can Sunday work? I mean, nobody, it's not a work day, like, work week.
But Sunday needs to be touched down, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna rush it.
What about the other department areas, of course, have you talked to them, Jamie, of course? Thursday or?
They're sitting right behind you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I was gonna tell him when it was, and then, and then be there.
I'll, I'll, I'll make Thursday work, I'll do everything I can to make Thursday work.
And if not, if they're in the tractor, maybe we can get him on the phone or something, then we can.
Five thirty?
I'd prefer to move to six, but I'll make whatever.
Okay, we can do it six, that's fine.
If six is okay with everyone, we'll just do it this Thursday at six P.M., if that's fine.
Are they gonna be here?
Oh, probably here. I talked to Nita today.
I mean, if we have to have information, are you gonna have it? Anything?
Oh, I would have. We will be ready.
I'm just ready to go back to the office.
Well, um, that was the plan until they came out with the statewide mask thing, and.
I don't care about that.
No?
I'm just saying.
I understand that, but playing it safe is.
We are gonna meet with department heads, though, to discuss each?
Yes. They were told that they were gonna be meeting with you guys.
We probably haven't gone yet.
No, I told you that you were meeting with the council.
Do we know yet budget-wise, if we're affected by the county?
They have continued to tell me that we're not gonna be affected.
I mean, we, we are, just not, probably as great as we thought. Except we probably are, just not as great as we thought that we were gonna be affected. I mean, we have to be affected.
I think.
Well, yeah, they can't cut half a million dollars out of the budget that don't affect us, so.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, I, I just actually talked to Nita again today. I don't know, I'll be talking to the auditor, or the budget and auditors tomorrow. They were supposed to be, I'm still working on a few of the departments, but we're supposed to talk tomorrow, and we'll have everything ready for you Thursday, so.
Okay, so we're looking at this Thursday at six P.M. for the budget meeting. Okay, anything else, Jamie? Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns for Jamie?
Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns for, uh, Jamie? Moving on. City attorney, John?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns for John? Okay, old business. Anything under old business that we need to discuss?
Where are we, property code violations, I guess? Kinda got lost where we're at in that step.
We haven't lost anything, we had to wait for our reports to come back, they came back last week and.
Five of them came back.
Five of them came back. And have already contacted those individuals?
Um, some of them aren't gonna be that easy, but, yeah.
Okay, we'll contact as many as we can. How many, how many reports have we requested?
I believe I sent over thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
And I've gotten five back so far, so.
Okay, so we have to wait for those reports to come back.
Okay. Okay, Jamie, um, how are we doing with, uh, any requests for house numbers?
Oh, let me tell you, it's been really fun.
Really?
There's been a lot of questions. Um, I don't know if you guys have been getting questions, um, you can always direct them to the office, I've been trying to help people think of creative, fun ways to, to get the house numbers where they don't want them, but we'll, we'll get there and we've had quite a few sign up already, so.
Okay, okay. Anything else we need to discuss on old business?
Fountain's ready to fill, basically, Warren Brothers are done.
So, they put on, they put on the first coat, I believe. So, I believe we're waiting on the second coat. I apologize because I did not call them for an update today.
They were here on Friday, doing, doing something else.
Okay, so maybe they did put the second coat in?
Yeah. Just curious.
Okay, yeah, I will actually call them, I'll call Chris tomorrow and I apologize because I did not, not get that update done.
Anything else under old business we need to discuss? Moving on to new business, ordinance number ten-seventy-four dash twenty.
So, both of these ordinances are the ordinances that we, um, approve every year. It's the Uniform Public Defense Code and the Standard Defense Code, or, yeah, um, standard traffic. It's for the police department, and we can go ahead and get them accepted, um, with knowing that I'm gonna wait to publish until we get the books in, because we cannot write the tickets until we have the books with the correct ordinances. So, I have it ready, prepared, and accept it, but I just won't publish and put it into effect until we get those books, so they can all be together, written correctly.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance ten-seventy-four dash twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number ten-seventy-five dash twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Five minutes, one, two.
Here, you can do that.
Cause he's the only one that really needs to be here for executive session, correct? Yeah. Five minutes, one, first, Jeff.
Okay. Now, motion?
I'd make a motion for five minutes to discuss employee performance, percentage of non-elected personnel matter, let me supervise it, to include council, mayor, administrator, attorney, Jeff.
We have a motion on the table, they're here, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll resume at, uh, seven forty. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to move Jeff Williamson from a salary position to an hourly position of twenty-seven fifty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have another fire?
Two-tens.
Two-tens, okay. Um, we wanna do the, the city administrator or the last one first?
City administrator.
Okay, we have a ten-minute executive session, employee performance, percentage of non-elected personnel matter, uh, for a city administrator. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll resume at, uh, seven fifty-one. Call this meeting back to order. Um, we now have a ten-minute, uh, executive session for possible applications, um, can I get a motion?
So moved.
We're not extending the previous one?
We'll make, we'll make an amend at, at the end of this one right here, we'll go back there. Okay, um, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Oh.
To include everybody at the table.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll resume at eight oh-two. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add another ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance, percentage of non-elected personnel, to include everybody sitting around the table.
We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll resume at twelve after eight. Call this meeting back to order. If there being no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We can adjourn.